Welcome to this weekly webinar, Minnesota MCC EdFi reporting work session on this July ninth day. My name is Jake Bansco. I'm the head of training at JMC. I'm an Eastern Iowa guy, but I have learned a lot about MCC reporting over the course of the last three or four years as as my colleague Rachel Cox. Rachel, do you want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Thanks, Jake. I am Rachel Cox. I'm on the training team as well. I am the lead of resources. So I write a lot of those articles that help you figure out different processes in JMC. Like Jake, I've been learning a lot about MCC reporting in Minnesota. So hopefully we can clear up any questions anybody has.
Absolutely. And a strength of these sessions and the intent of these sessions is to answer questions. And we know that this MCC reporting process is somewhat new to many of our folks, especially via EdFi. So we wanted to carve out these times for everybody to have a chance to ask their questions, not like you can't connect with a trainer regularly. But we were speaking off recording to Sheila from Heartland Lakes and she had a direct question. We were able to help her out. We'll kind of revisit what she talked about or the question that she asked because it's a fairly common question that we get. But we really like to use these sessions for shared learning. So Rachel and I are going to share some of our learning today with some clients that have reached out with some questions about some errors that they've received and how your data setup impacts the the quality of the information that you're sending along to the state. And you might be getting some validation messages that reference that data setup. So it's all interrelated and we're going to go through a high level. Sheila, if you have any more questions, please feel free to ask. But let's get going with our preparing MCC course data. And before I even do that, I'm going to reference the whole enchilada. This would be on our YouTube channel. We have the 2425 Minnesota MCC EdFi reporting video. This video on demand from March 7th, 2025 has the full process for entering and submitting MCC data. So if you are brand new to MCC reporting and you're wondering where to start, this video is going to take you through the entire process. And if you show more in our description, you'll get some detailed information about some specific timestamps that you can visit to complete some of these tasks. So if, for example, spoiler alert, you're having an issue with college courses. You know, right here is a section that you can go to working with college courses right here at the 106 mark and jump right to that spot. So you don't have to continually revisit and watch this whole video. Also, we have a link to our PDF. So you click that link and you can download a PDF copy, which many folks find very useful, especially the spot down here on your college courses. So you can use this, reference the steps. This will get you all of the information that you need to know. So I like to kick off these work sessions by showing everybody those resources. We also have a great help center full of resources available on your widget. You can visit your help center and there are tons of articles directed toward Minnesota State Reporting, but also see if I enter MCC, you're going to get some specifics on MCC processes as well. So with that, has your school imported course data? Or do you have any questions about this part of the process? Hopefully we're to the point where everybody has imported course data from the prior year. It's the first thing that you would do to begin submitting. Again, we're gonna take you where you wouldn't want to go for that. This is going to be under schedules, course, import course data. And if you have a question about whether or not this process has been done in your school yet, you should get some information right at the top of your page that would let you know right off the bat. If you have imported course data, you're also going to get plenty of information right on that page about what that import does and why it's important. And this would be the opportune time for our development team to push out an update. Because I'm doing a webinar. And while we let that spin, we'll take a look at our next question. All right, there we go. So yes, this is letting me know that we've already run this process. It was run on in back in March. I'm going to let you know the user that's run it. And we've got some some very specific information as to what happens in this import. Basically, what you're doing is you're pulling over state reportable data from the previous year. As long as the course name and number match precisely. So if you've changed nothing from one year to the next, we'll pull over all of that course data. So this will be the first thing that you do for 2526. So once you're completed with your 2425 school year, 2526, the first thing that you do is import all of your course data, probably before you've begun editing your courses just to get started on the right foot. Rach, do you have anything to add to that? It's a fairly straightforward process.
No, I don't think so. I was going to add exactly what you said. When should, when should they be doing that next? But as soon as they finish up with that 2425 data.
Absolutely. All right, number two, do you have any questions or need assistance regarding teacher room number or course grade setup? And this is the piece that we were talking to Sheila about just a second ago. Before I do anything, I'm going to go into my file online settings. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be going file online settings. I should be going to file administrator options. I'm going to take a look at my EdFi settings just to make sure I am prepped and ready to go for MCC reporting. Many of you probably already have this enabled. Not sure why we're running so slow right now, though. I don't know, Rach, can you see if you're running any faster? I don't know if it's my machine or if it's our database, if we've got.
That's what I was just trying to look at too. And I think I am, I am also getting, I was able to pull up administrator after there goes. Mine's also a little bit laggy.
All right. Might be doing some updates with our, with our demo databases right now. So bear with us. We'll get through it. This enable MCC data collection would need to be enabled in order for you to even see some of the fields that we're going to be talking about, but definitely in order for you to submit data. Those of you that have never submitted data via EdFi, this is another reason to get on board with submitting data via EdFi. You can also submit your MCC data that way as well. So now that I've saved, the piece that we were talking about, I'll start with our teachers, you know, under attendance, staff, teachers. There are a few fields that you would definitely need filled out for state reporting. The file folder number is one of those fields. As far as your rooms are concerned, that site number should mirror the the state reportable building. So I've got state reportable building 109. And if you're looking, you know, where else can I find this information? You can find it on your student data page. You can also find it under Minnesota Mars Edit School Data. And this is going to give you your school number. So a lot of information's talking back and forth on multiple pages here. Your so we've gone through your staff, we've gone through your rooms. The next big piece is your grades and Sheila asked the question about your elementary reporting on a standard based report card. But evidently there's a requirement with MCC that standard based reporting is not enough. And that is correct. You at the school level probably want to report out on standards to get to that level of granularity to let your families and students know where they are in relation to certain standards and whether or not they need some, some extra support with those standards. So you use a standard based report card and that's your practice and that's perfectly fine. The MCC reporting, the state would like to know whether or not students have successfully completed the requirements for their standards. And that's where they just want one course grade that would demonstrate whether or not your students have been successful. So it's an additional step for teachers and or front office staff. But it's fairly simple. It starts on the grading utilities edit grade values page. And on the far right hand side, you've got a state reporting grade. So your school might recognize a number of grades, you know, you might have four, three, two, ones, you might have symbols, letters, numbers, you know, percentages, whatever it is that your school uses. The state just asks that it fall under one of these categories. So the state allows a one through four. They allow, you know, the traditional letter grades, the values A through F. And then they have a few more, an I for an incomplete pass, pass, no credit, withdrawn fail or a withdrawn pass. And you know, those will cover all of your situations. So you'd need to associate a state reportable grade with any of the course grades that you intend to use for your students. And then the last bit, if you are only a standard based reporting school, you would need to add a grade to those. So your teachers can add this easily from JMC teacher and that's probably the best practice would be to have your teachers do this before they check out for the year. Many of your upper level teachers already do this. You know, because they're, they're giving course grades and all you'd have to do is associate that state reportable grade with a course grade. And as a result of sending report cards to the office, those are going to pull in. But your teachers, if, if they only use standard based report cards, would have to go to this edit course grades page. Choose their course and then mark a pass fail for each of their students. Or you know, it's, it's pretty easy to fill your grade column accordingly. Here I'll grab something that, all right, we have some letter grades here, but you know, maybe, you know, this is my dropdown list of all of my state reportable grades and all the grades that my school recognizes. I can fill score column, fill grade column. And all of them will show up. I can change the one or two that maybe didn't meet the requirements. And then submit those to the office, then the office has the record. If you need to enter these from the office, you can enter them from the office side as well. Probably the quickest way to do this would be under grading entry, list entry. You would choose your courses. I'm just going to go pull up a list of my courses here. And I've got all of my courses listed here. And then I can add my pass or fail, whatever it might be. And you know, the problem with this is you don't have that, that mass fill option. So it would require quite a few clicks, but easiest way, get your teachers to send that in. You have a little bit of time. I don't think the, the deadline for 2425 is until October, October 1st, somewhere in there. So if you need to do the, if you need to have your teachers do this when they get back to school, you can always have them switch the year to 2425, go back to last year, resubmit course grades for the, the students that they have, and then you can submit those grading elements. Rachel, anything to add about course grades?
Not so much about the course grades, but you were looking at some of the, the teacher elements. It's really important to make sure that your teachers, their file folder number is accurate. If, if that is, has a typo in it or isn't there any course they're associated with is going to have an error. So you want to make sure you have that. You want to make sure that all of your courses have room numbers assigned for the same reason. You'll, you'll end up getting an error on that as well. So and, and make sure that all of your courses have teachers. So just those, those little details, you want to make sure you shore up to avoid errors.
Yep, yep. Last name, first name, make sure everything's spelled correctly. Yeah, hidden characters, you know, if you have a space accidentally before the first name or the last name, those are some common errors that I've seen. You know, slight errors in the spelling, those will all impact whether or not the data can flow from JMC to EdFi. Great tip. Question three, setting up course data is important. Is it an important part of the MCC process? Are there any questions on adding details on state specific section, state specific course or MCC tabs? Of course, this is done on the schedules, course, edit course data page. We have our sections tab, but then we have the state specific section tab. So that's where all of this information gets entered or that's where it ends up. If you enter it through the mass assign feature, which we'll talk about in a second. State specific course. MCC tab, especially if we are reporting college courses or early education. I, I don't think we have a question in this slide deck directed toward early education, but Rachel, I know you fielded quite a few questions regarding early education, and I know a lot of them have to do with course setup. So can you take me through a few common scenarios that you've seen pop up over the last few months?
Sure. I don't know that I've taken a lot of questions about course setup, but especially for like those VPK courses, that's really important. A lot of schools got VPK funding this year that have never had it in the past. So it is important that you are designating those courses as early ed courses. And Jake can maybe show you here, once he pulls up a course. If you want to look at that course level, what's great about this MCC tab is that once you select the type of course you're working with, it gives you all the fields that you need to fill out. So there isn't a lot of extra information there making the page messy. But if you, if you select that early ed course and then you'll see all the fields that you need to complete here.
It's all just create a course quickly.
Awesome.
Call it our early ed course. Save. All right. So I'll add a section. So all of that information would need to be on there, including an elementary or a bell schedule, which we'll talk about in a little bit. All right. So which tab would you like me to start on? Is it that MCC?
Yeah, let's go to that MCC tab. And let's actually go to the, yeah, the course level.
All right. So preschool, early education is what I would be setting.
Yes. And here are all of the fields that you want to fill out to make sure that you are reporting the, the course information accurately through MCC.
Okay. So any issues that are, are, are there any issues that have come up? I, I would say incomplete fields probably would be a big thing. Making sure, you know, you, you've got to scroll all the way to the bottom of this page right in here, this box to make sure all of.
And even just, just having courses, I, I think that previously not everybody built courses for early education, you know, they, they had programs, but maybe not necessarily courses. So making sure that you have a course for each of the different programs, preschool programs that you, that you house at your school.
All right. Good deal. All right. So um, I think I, yeah, go ahead. I, I was just going to say, I, I think I have some more to add when we get to the college courses. Those are some things that I've seen more specifically, but I, I don't necessarily have any, anything to add, you know, your state course codes, you'd want those entered. This dropdown list should populate with, with courses. If it's not populated with courses, you'd need to update your tables first. And we're going to get to this. This is kind of part of the submission process. But Minnesota EdFi start year. These tabs in particularly the tables tab, it's going to pull information from the state into your system. So if they have updated course numbers or course names or descriptions or anything like that. If you're, if you're not seeing those course codes on that schedules course, set a course data page, you might need to update your tables.
One thing I'd add, Jake, I'm going to give a plug for the course data list as a way to easily look at some of these data elements for all of your courses at once.
Yeah, this would be that course name and number expanded radio button. In preview and you can see, do I have a state course code? I can notice right off the bat, like no, third grade ELA does not. I would have to add that.
And even to make sure they all have bell schedules, they all have teachers assigned, they all have room numbers. Like this is a great way to look at a lot of data in one spot.
Agreed.
And Jake, it looks like Sheila did have another question. She was asking if the teachers can review this as well. And I'm assuming that she's talking about those state reportable grades. That's only done on the office side. But if you're, if you're wondering, can the teachers review this webinar? They absolutely can. They can, they can review it on our YouTube channel too, so that they can see those steps in JMC teacher to go in and add those course grades.
All right. Great. Uh, so let's shift gears a little bit, talk about reporting instructional minutes with JMC. One of the major questions that we ask, is your school calculating instructional minutes using a bell schedule or manually entering instructional minutes for your courses? Kind of high level. What this means? The state wants to know how much time students are expected to spend on a course throughout a term. And so we have one of those fields. This is under, this is where it ends up. On that edit course data page, on the state specific section tab, it's the instructional minutes. And they are section specific. So this is SEM one. And how many instructional minutes would a student expect to spend throughout the course of a semester? So if you think about this in terms of days, let's say we have 90 days in a semester and a student is expected to spend 60 minutes per day on this subject. It comes out to about 5,400 minutes. So you know, a couple of ways that you can get those instructional minutes into each of these fields for state reporting. So you can go into each section and you can hand enter the instructional minutes, which is going to take you a lot of time. But a couple of tools that we have in JMC that allow you to speed that up. We have the ability to calculate based on a bell schedule or we have the ability to mass assign those instructional minutes. So the first thing, no matter what, every course has to have a bell schedule in it, whether you're calculating or not. It's a, it's a required data element. If you don't have anything in that bell schedule field, you're going to get an error. So the first thing that you would do, this is under attendance, bell schedules and class periods. You'd edit a bell schedule, make sure you have at least one bell schedule. You can have multiple bell schedules, but I think the, the piece of advice that we've given clients, if, if you're, if every day looks basically the same like a high school or a middle school schedule, I think we have a rigid bell schedule. They move from one class period to the next. Each class period is 45 minutes long and that's the way it usually is. It's easy to calculate schedules based on that. Elementary schedules get all sorts of wonky. You have, you might have reading for two days or two hours one day. You might have it for 45 minutes the next day. Same with science, same with social studies. There are a lot more variables in elementary schedules. So typically our elementary schools will just mass assign those instructional minutes. But you still have to create a bell schedule and you still have to create periods for your bell schedule. So you're going to have one elementary schedule. And maybe if, you know, you only have two periods for your elementary schedule. So you create your elementary schedule on that edit bell schedules page, and then you would go into your elementary schedule and make sure that you have the number of periods that you use for your scheduling purposes defined. So if you only use periods one and two for your elementary courses, make sure you have periods one and two defined. Let's call it my PM block. It's during school, you have to have each of these fields defined. So, and maybe this goes from 12 PM to and update. And so now each of the period, as long as each of the periods is accounted for, I shouldn't receive an error. As long as each of the fields are filled out, I shouldn't receive an error. So you'll, you'll do that for each of your schedules. And then when it gets time to creating your courses, each course section should have a corresponding bell schedule. So my elementary schedule is associated with my third grade course and I've got period one. One of the common errors that I see is, let's say I have period three associated with this course. While my belt, my elementary bell schedule, I've only defined two periods. So it's going to throw an error at me and it's going to say period three undefined or some in, in bell schedule. It's going to be some form of language like that. I would either have to define a period three on my bell schedule or I would have to change this period to a period that's been defined. Rachel, do you have anything to add about creating those bell schedules? I'll talk a minute about mass assigning elements too, so.
No, I don't think so. Just exactly what you said, you know, the rigid schedule is a little bit easier with elementary. There's a couple of different ways that you can go about it. You can, you can hand enter if you, you know, if you're in elementary school, it just has one, one classroom per grade level, you know, that, that wouldn't take you too long. But just knowing the different ways that you can calculate those minutes.
So speaking of getting those data elements on there, this is under schedules, course, mass assign, course, section data. You know, if I needed to make sure that all of my courses had a bell schedule associated, I choose bell schedule and let's say I can populate all of my elementary or all of my first grade courses with that elementary bell schedule. I click assign and that's what's going to end up there. You know, I can do that. I, I would do the same for each of my elementary grade levels. And then I would flip over to my high school schedule and assign that to my high school courses. So getting that, that bell schedule data element on there is fairly simple. You can do it all in one shot with a few clicks. And then when it gets down to whether or not you're going to calculate or hand enter those instructional minutes, you've got two different options. I'll speak to the calculated first. It's, there's a lot more work going on under the hood with the calculated instructional minutes. And this is really a And, um, this is really a big time saver for our high schools and, and middle schools. And it's, it's going to calculate a pretty accurate. Anticipated. Number of instructional minutes for a course. Um, using a number of different pieces in J M C, so you've got. The bell schedule class periods, so it's going to use the start times and the end times of those class periods that we've defined on that attendance. Uh, bell schedules edit, uh, periods page. It's also going to use the calendar, so it's going to take a look at the term start and end dates and calculate how many days we have. And then it's going to look at the course section, the number of days met per term. It's going to look at the term as well. And then it's going to look at the course specific, whether it's a block length, you know, if you have. One block length or two block lengths for a course, so it uses all of that information to calculate. Your number of minute, a number of instructional minutes, and it's going to get you to a pretty, uh, close number. Um, and you know, if you're not calculating. What you can easily do is do the hand calculation and figure out like, alright, my students roughly spend. Five thousand four hundred minutes. Per term. So I enter five thousand four hundred and. You know, that's, that's for all third graders. You know, for all of my courses. I can assign that and it's going to let me know, here are the courses that I've updated and I might decide like, you know what? We spend five thousand four hundred in all these subject areas except for science, we don't spend five thousand four hundred. Uh, a. Year in science or a, a term, we only spend about half that. So now I can go to my course number five on the edit course data page. Find five and I can update this to a more accurate number. From the state specific section tab, so there's my fifty-four hundred, I can go to twenty-eight hundred or whatever. I'd be. And again, that is your, your best estimate. I think if you were to speak with the folks at the M D E Karen Millet, she would ask you to get to as close to a number as you possibly can. Uh, Rachel, anything to add?
Yeah, um. And just double checking, so if you do hand enter those instructional minutes. Do you accidentally overwrite if you mass assign other minutes?
Oh, say that again.
Okay, so if for right here, this third grade science, you went in and hand entered twenty-eight hundred minutes. But now if I went and I wanted to mass assign fifty-four hundred minutes to my other third grade classes, what would happen to this one, would it overwrite? My hand minutes.
It would overwrite and I don't think it gives you the option of not overriding, so you would want to get the bulk first, the bulk established first and then. Go back and. Fill in your outliers for that.
Awesome, and Sheila has another question here too, Sheila says that they added seventh grade this year. Uh, minutes for their seventh grade is going to be different from K to six, so should she create a new middle school within J M C so those students are compliant with the state? Uh, I, I think Sheila, that would be where you would just need to add that new bell schedule.
Yeah, um, yeah, a couple of ways that you could handle it, you know, if, if you wanted to calculate the instructional minutes and you wanted to do so. Um, using a different bell schedule, yeah, you could create a new bell schedule, make sure that you've added, um. That bell schedule to the appropriate courses. And then you would run the calculate option instead. Um, since it's just one grade level, um, you're probably talking. Maybe a half dozen courses, um. You know, maybe, maybe up to ten courses, it might be just as easy to. Use the one bell schedule that you have and just make sure it's assigned and then go in and, um, add. The instructional minutes for each of your terms. Uh, for. The seventh grade grade level. Uh, and you can do that. Non-calculated, probably pretty easy, or probably just as easy as you could the calculated.
Yeah, and especially if it's, if it's a new grade level, so you're creating courses for that grade as you create the course, just put those minutes right in.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, just make sure to add a bell schedule when you do so. Um, yeah, I think we covered the mass assigned feature for adding instructional minutes as well, um. I don't think I have anything to add to that, uh, working with college courses. Um, how can we assist you with the process, uh, for creating college courses or assigning college course grades? Um, I have seen several errors pop up and, um, regarding college courses. And some of these errors have been kind of difficult to diagnose because the errors are coming from. Uh, the EdFi validation page, so what's happening is the information's getting out of J M C. And, um, we're, we're not detecting any errors when we send it, but then, uh, on the. Uh, the receiving side in EdFi, EdFi is saying, oh, hey, we don't have this data or this data is not matching. Um, I'm, I'll kind of explain what I'm talking about here, uh, in just a second, but the first thing that. You should reference, uh, when creating college courses. Uh, would be slide, uh. Ninety-six through, uh, one oh five in the M C C C presentation. Cause this goes through everything that you need to do to make sure your information is entered correctly. So if you're receiving errors from J M C. This is how you would fix it. First, make sure that there's an alternative course name. In that course name field and, and that should match what the college lists in their. Their handbook. From there, you've got a few data elements, uh, state specific course code that you would need. It's on that state specific course code feel, uh, field right there on that tab. Um, and then on the M C C C tab, uh, you have a record type and a course level. And it, it's important to choose the correct course level and record type, and we have. Some very specific combinations that you would use, for example, if you have an articulation agreement. Uh, if you're entered into an articulation agreement, you would select one from that record type. And select A from the course level dropdown list. If it's a dual concurrent enrollment course, you would select one from the record type and D. From the, uh, course level dropdown list. If it's a P S E O course, you're going to select four from the record type and X from the course level dropdown list. And, and those are, and, and each of those combinations are going to reveal. A separate set of. Drop downs. And checkboxes. So I'm going to grab my college course here, I get a psych course. So here I have my alternative course name. I have my course code. And on my M C C C tab, if this is. A one D. You'll notice I have, okay, what post-secondary institution? Is providing services for this dual concurrent enrollment, I'd select that. And then when I send my data. Um. As long as I have all of the fields filled out properly, uh, the state should be able to receive it on the EdFi end. I've run into several issues where folks send me a list of courses that, hey, these, um. They're, they're not airing when, uh, I submit them out of J M C. But when I go to my EdFi validations report, uh, I'm getting these errors that say that I don't have. Uh, the appropriate course level or record type, or I'm looking at it and it is appropriate. Um, what I've noticed has been happening is data is getting trapped in that EdFi portal, it's incorrect data. And we're not overriding it for whatever reason from J M C. So, um, we have these handy functions here under Minnesota EdFi. Um, specifically the delete course option. And the delete course option is not going to delete the course from your J M C site. What this is going to do is it's going to break the connection or wipe out any data that's in the EdFi portal. So I can search for my. My psychology course. I can delete that course and that's going to remove any data that was associated with that course from EdFi. And then I can re-upload. That data, so I can go to update course. Search psychology. And then I can update that course level or course information. And. Once I submit that, as long as I have everything filled out in J M C correctly, I shouldn't receive any errors and that should clear up any errors that are in the EdFi portal. And it might take, you know, uh, up to twenty-four hours for that to, to refresh in the EdFi portal, so you might have to wait a little bit and check back on that validation report later. But, um, that's one of the tactics that I've been using to, uh, clear up. Data errors that I see, and it looks like I have. Some data errors. With that course.
Think you also need the college course code when you're setting it up.
Yeah, so I'm missing the college course code, so that's, uh, uh, an indication that I'd have to go back to course four hundred and fix that, so. Schedules, course, edit course data. Four hundred. I have my.
In your M C C C tab, there you go.
Oh, look, no, no college course code. I don't know what that would be, I'm going to make it up. See if that works.
Yes, why probably.
Yes, why? Probably for psych, alright. Save that information and then I can go back and, so this is, this is a best practice for. Um, sending data. So I can go back to EdFi. Update course. Choose that one individual course four hundred. And hopefully that cleared up the air. I'm still getting an error and this is. Alright, send one course, uh, instructional, instructional method not set, please edit. Schedules, course, edit course data. Sections tab, alright. Schedules, course. Edit course data. Four hundred. Make sure I have everything, I've got a bell schedule, yeah. State specific section. Oh, I have instructional method not specified, so it needs that. So we're going to be, we're going to say this is a classroom. This is pro, part of that process, if those of you have been submitting data. For M triple C or EdFi, you know, it's just a matter of find and fix errors. As they come up. Make sure all the fields are filled out that are required. And then resubmit as needed. Okay, yeah. So that's a, another important note here is I'm playing whack-a-mole with these airs, I'm not really going in order of operations. Uh, the order of operations that we would recommend you follow, uh, would be on the Minnesota. EdFi start year. Page and, um. I think this is getting to. The next question, has your school enabled M C C C EdFi data collections? And were you able to work through the items on the tables tab on the Minnesota EdFi start year page? So, um, the big thing to note, Minnesota EdFi start year, this is where you would begin. Um, all of these items on this checklist would need to be taken care of, so anything upfront. Uh, that we have. Attend, uh, making sure your calendar is set. Making sure your bell schedules are, are set and your class periods are set for that bell schedule. Um, massing, mass assigning any section data, uh, such as bell schedules that needs to be done. Uh, making sure all courses have teachers and periods assigned for every building. Uh, making sure course data has been imported from the prior year, making sure all teachers have a file folder number for every building. These are all items that I would take care of before moving on to the next step, so. That error that I received, if I would work through the process, left to right. Top to bottom, make sure all of these things are taken care of before I. Begin submitting information, I won't have to play whack-a-mole with my airs, so, um. More work up front, or a, at least this work up front, once it's done, that's going to drastically reduce the number of errors that you get on the back end of this. Uh, Rachel, anything to add about submitting?
No, just the same thing that you were just saying, make sure you start from top to bottom, um, especially when you get to that general tab and you're submitting data to the state. Um, it's important to go step by step, because if you have an error on that first step that you're not addressing, it's going to compound like Jake was saying for each additional step. So clearing out your errors at each step allows you to, um, have an easier submission process.
Yeah, so when I was updating courses, I was actually skipping. You know, I, I was skipping right down to these. Three steps right here and, you know, if I, if I didn't have. Any of these done prior to. Yeah, it's just gonna, I'm going to work backwards and instead of working from the beginning to the end, it's going to compound mistakes, so. Um. Tables tab, this is updating information from the state. So you want to make sure that you have the most recent information from the state updated, click through those buttons, top to bottom. And then do the same thing on the general tab, update. If there are errors, fix the errors, go back and update after you've fixed the errors. Make sure that those errors are cleared and then once you're submitting, uh, no error or air free, then you'd move on to the next enabled button. Uh, work on down the list. And, um, when you get to the point of submitting course data, so let's say I've updated my courses. And all of them are air free except for one or two courses. I can go to those one or two courses, I can fix those and then rather than having to spend the time of submitting all course data. Uh, and you know, sitting there and watching it process through all of that course information, I can update the one or two courses using that update course feature. Uh, any assistance or Rachel, do you have anything add, uh, to add about resolving unexplained errors that have popped up during the data submission process? I think you were mentioning, uh, you know, a lot of the. The early education errors, um, there any, is there anything common that you see, uh, coming through that we haven't talked about?
Sure, similar to what you were just talking about with, um, the courses, uh, and you know, deleting the, the course data out of EdFi and then, and resubmiting. Um, a common error that a lot of our schools are having, um, is with that V P K, um, with those V P K courses. Uh, the schools found out, uh, many schools found out in April and in May that they qualified for V P K. So they were kind of like retrofitting those courses and retrofitting those students. And sometimes the old data was just kind of sticking in EdFi, so, you know, removing those courses from EdFi and then rerunning it and the same with the student. If it's saying like, oh, hey, there's, they're in a, um, early ed program, not V P K, well, we've moved them, so maybe it just takes deleting that student. And then updating them again so that, um, that, that new record can go through at five.
Yep. Great call. I think that about wraps it up, if there aren't any more questions, that's, you know, kind of, uh, a high level of the things that we've been seeing with M triple C reporting. Um, you know, some folks are trying to wrap that up before they move on to, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, the availability for submitting M triple C data, um. For twenty-five, twenty-six. Now again, it, this is something that, you know, you, you can do this at the beginning of the year, you can update throughout the year. Uh, we, we recommend that you stay on top of it. Uh, so that, you know, you're, you're not just rushing at the, the deadline to try to get everything in and try to fix, um, all of these errors. It's something that you can continually do throughout the school year. Some news and upcoming events, new use, new J M C users, we have good news, the J M C trainers are kicking off a webinar series. Aimed at getting you up to speed on the J M C tools that are most essential to your new role. Uh, episode one of welcoming new users will center around J M C office with a tour of the module's top time savers for managing student records. Register now to join this fundamental J M C office training. Um, i- if you are new to a role, if you have teachers that are new to a role. Uh, we highly recommend that you keep an eye out on this new user series as it's a great way to onboard your staff quickly. Um, just around the corner, we got summer check-ins, uh, we're getting prepped and ready, uh, to get you prepped and ready. Uh, for the fall term as part of the summer check-in calls, our team will ring you in August to offer support. That can help you thrive in the new school year and to see if your district would like to host a J M C regional workshop. Uh, for new users in your area, if you have questions, please reach out to training at J M C I N C dot com. Those regional workshops, we used to do them in the spring, we're moving those in the fall in the hopes of catching. uh, anybody in your area or district that might be new, uh, to JMC. So we can get them all trained up and up to speed and ready to go. Enjoy the general store in all of its glory. Our e-commerce portal has been, uh, a long time coming. And on September twenty-sixth, general store will launch in full as your one-stop shop for selling school merch, providing tickets to community ed classes and events and managing fundraising. Uh, to have general store added to your JMC toolkit, please reach out to our sales team. Uh, I have to, have to say, I've been working with some schools, uh, during our soft launch of our general store, uh, selling apparel and accessories and it is pretty sweet, I've got to say. Stay ahead of the state reporting curve. Data collection and submission guidelines are ever-changing. Luckily, our data experts have tracked and compiled the latest batch of changes into regulatory roundup training, keeping you in the loop and your data in good shape for the twenty-five, twenty-six state reporting, uh, school year. Nebraska, you're up first. Tune in on July thirtieth for your roundup. All other districts stay tuned for your turn in August. So I believe we have the Minnesota state reporting roundup, uh, somewhere in the middle of August, like August thirteenth somewhere. Does that sound right, Rachel?
Yep, that's what I was thinking too.
Alright, well, thank you for joining us today for this, uh, weekly webinar. For Rachel Cox, I'm Jake Fansway. Thanking you for choosing JMC and we will catch you on the flip side.